Here we go. Meeting underwater, please. Welcome, everybody. We'll start with public comment. Anybody have a comment? Please raise your hand. You'll be recognized. Come to the podium, please. Face the select board. You have three minutes to vent. All right? Anybody?
Nope.
All right, then we'll move to number one. And number one, if my memory tells me right, is... Actually, it's three. I apologize. Toby Van Aken, transfer station. Toby, we know you've had a tough couple of weeks, and we're very sorry for that.
Thank you. You get back on track here. You have your three proposals there. I don't know if you got them in front of you. On the office quotes, what's going to take to insulate this, get it done, get it complete? Newell, I was kind of recommending that we could go this direction due to the cover on the top of the roof. It established like six inches of foam, what the gentleman was saying. It also does a membrane on top of it like you see a black membrane. So what it'll do is it'll protect the existing roof at the same time while we're trying to conserve the heat. Because in time, a lot of the roof on top, they have the screws and stuff. I'm not sure if these have the rubber screws on top of it. In time, they crack and they leak in time. But this right here does a cover that we shouldn't have to mess with for the next 20, 30 years. But if we go the other direction, that when they do the spray foam in the office, that they're going to have to go in there and cut the existing insulation out. And the purpose of that is because the foam is... When they spray it on, it's related by temperature. And what it'll do is it'll melt the plastic, what's there right now. So what's the sense even taking that out of there? All that time and effort and work, and all it could do is go in and just... We could kill two stones and one bird by doing the... Protecting the roof and doing the insulation at the same time. It'll protect it for the heat escape. So versus of the pricing, it's something like maybe $100, $100, $200 or so versus that, might as well just do that on the roof, the membrane part. That's what my recommendations are. But you also, too, you have the thermal energy that they also have the rebate. I'm not sure about the Newell, if they have the rebate. It was never talked about. They have on the bottom, I don't know if you have your sheet in front of you, that tells you the total price is about $6,150.
Yeah. Minus the rebate after.
Minus the rebate, because I don't know how that fits in with the other company. But the thing is that if the best way to do this whole thing is just to do the membrane part of it, that's my theory on this. But whatever light you decide what to do. In this case here, by insulating the office.
Any other questions?
What into messant paint is? Sounds good. I've never heard that before.
Yeah, I don't know that either. Something about, I don't know what it is, but if you shut... When they do the spray foam stuff, it's got a lot of chemicals in it and stuff. And they have to shut the facility down for a couple of days. We can't go in there and work. And besides, at the same time, they'll have this, everything all apart in there. The roof, the sort of dry and cure. So if not, if they come on weekends, it's going to cost a little bit extra. Okay? And then you're looking at versus of shutting the facility down for a day or so by doing the spray stuff. And by then, they have the drop ceiling down and all this stuff. It's just going to be a chaos. But it's something that, to me, that's why I recommended to do the roof part of this. Stay outside. They also, they're protecting the metal roof and doing the insulation at the same time. That's two.
Mr. Chairman, are you taking questions from the audience? Yes, absolutely.
Intuascent paint is fire retardant.
I'm sorry?
Fire retardant.
Fire retardant. Okay, good. Thank you. Good to know. Anybody else? Any comments, questions? Nothing? My goodness, here we go. Gentlemen?
Yeah, no problem.
How are they going to tie that into the roof cap on that? How does that work, Toby?
On top of the roof?
Yeah, because there's a roof ridge line right there.
Yeah, right up on top.
Do they just tie that?
They just go right into it. They tie right into the existing. So they'll fill that whole area. That was the question I asked, that, and also the sides. So when you got the metal, make sure they're tied into the existing siding. And in the front, so there's no privilege. It's like if you see, when they do the roofs, like on the most, the elementary school they did, something similar to that. But they're going to be doing insulation on the bottom of that, on top of the ribs. So they don't have to take anything apart. They'll just build on top what we got. And that'll protect it existing for a time period.
And how long, how long do you think it'll take them to do it?
Probably a day or so, maybe a day or two. I just estimate a couple of days at least. Get by some time. Due to, if we're in operation, obviously, can't put a stage in and stuff. But they have to spray it on. I think he told me, the guy told me, he says you're going to spray it on the roof. There's a way to do it, he said. They've done this before, I guess. So there's a procedure on that.
So in terms of paying for it, there's money in the budget that came through the Energy Committee. And so part of it can come out of that.
That I don't know if I... I don't know whether I don't have...
That's for the... Was that for the hydraulic tanks, et cetera?
No, no, that's actually, that's separate.
That was strictly for...
That was strictly, this is strictly for the office.
Right.
Because I believe, I wasn't sure in the minutes, I know if I talked about it last time, that I do have a company doing this, because there's a couple of variables in this we could deal with, how we could wrap these tanks. Plus, I got Jim Banks and somebody else. I got them in tune to this, because they're actually giving us an idea of what we could do at the same time by putting like a timer. So it'll come on in the mornings, and then it'll, you know, shut off in the evenings.
This is the heater?
This, we're talking about the hydraulic heater.
The heater, right, for the tank, yeah.
Yeah, the tanks. There's four of them.
Keep the oil warm.
Right, exactly. During the winter time. And during the winter time, we just leave them on. Summer time, we just leave them off completely, obviously. But the wrapping that I'm looking at right now, they're pertaining to... They're like, they cover piping for steam lines. And they're like, they're about inch thick, two inches roughly. And you can cut them in sections, and you can just put them on like a patch. Do a little tie wire on either on floor corners. Okay, that's one element we're looking at here to do. It'll be a cost effect. We just take it on, just put them on. And then if we need to get to it, or if it gets too hot, we could actually undo the tie and take them off and tuck them in underneath. So it's all set and done. And then if during the winter time, we just put the sides back on. This will actually kind of help out with the thermo coupling on the inside, the heating. So it'll help keep shutting off and off during the winter time. Basically, we're mainly looking at the winter time, basically. And then the other is putting on the, building a box for both of them. All of them, actually, that we could actually put over it and then do some type of cap, but leave it open for the motor. And also, when we do the box type, we could actually, it'd actually keep the noise down on it. Actually, it's a big, well, a couple of those are pretty loud, the noise going through there and kind of wakes up the resonance that come in the morning. But anyways, that's another factor. It keeps the heat and protect, you know, we... Because everyone, the heat and also the noise, the sound of noise. So I got another contract that looks at that. Actually, Newell is actually doing that for us, looking at it and giving us a price. And say they're going to take a little time to get some pricing down because they're going to try to get exact measurements due to the lines and the penetrations of the legible and stuff like that. And so I should hear something from them next couple of weeks versus on that. And then FW Web is looking to come down and do a sketch on it for us. I told them, I just want to make sure it's right. It's something that would be easy for us to handle and also to help save electricity or keep the cost down.
Okay. Should we go ahead and discuss the swap shop insulation, too, which is also involving some costs in the decision whether even want to do that or not? But it's part of the money that the Energy Committee is saying they might want to donate to put that insulation in. I mean, if we're going to talk about the cost, should we go ahead and see just what we're talking about there?
Well, there is no additional money that the Energy Committee has in its operating budget. I mean, they had...
No, it's just the $5,000.
It's the $5,000 which we've already allocated to the swap shop.
Okay. That is part of the construction cost in total?
Correct, yes.
Okay, I don't think they realize that.
Maybe Toby can clarify in terms of the... Because we've discussed this already, in operation, and I think we had a question. In terms of the whole installation, because the last meeting, we had one of the members of the Energy Committee, Chairman Baker, come and talk to us about this. And it's my understanding, maybe incorrectly, but when the swap shop is open, you're going to have the large door open so people can get stuff and bring stuff out. So insulating that particular building, the large building you're building now, wouldn't make any sense because it's not keeping any heat.
Right, exactly. The only way something like that will make sense is if it's in the winter time. But we're going to have the doors open all the time. It's going to be, it's like a garage. Besides, you insulate it, and then you're going to have to do the sheetrock aspect of it. And then you're going to say later on time, you're going to see maybe holes in the walls. You're going to see this. You're going to see things slamming into walls and stuff like that. Especially the money. I had a couple of, I got a few numbers, like $4,500, $4,300 to do all this. And that was not even considered into the, to do this. And I feel that we're not heating it. We're just going in, taking it out, dropping things off, pulling things out, and organizing, pulling it in and out. That's it. In and out. And during the winter time, everybody wears about 10 layers of clothes. So I'm just kind of looking at what... And if we decide to do this, it's not a bad thing. This thing is, it's just the fact that it might set us back a little longer than to get this thing done completely, the bottom line, the way I look at it. And right now, I just talked to, Randy and I had a long conversation today. And since I was set back three or four weeks now of all the, you know, the things, situation I've been through, and that we're going to actually do a little more on this now this week and try to get a lot of it done in the next couple of weeks or so and see where we're at on that. And we should, because I got to get the electric in there. But I feel that if we do this, if you want to put something on the walls, I think the best thing to do this in like a garage atmosphere like this, since we're not heating it, not playing poker games and stuff like that, I think we should put plywood up or something. Something that you can mount things to, the existing to the wall. Because you don't have much. You got the studs, but you don't have different areas. You're not, you don't, you can't mount things to, like supports, shelving and stuff like that. So I'm just throwing those out there. And when you get to sheetrock, if you do insulation, you got to do the sheetrock regardless. You got to cover it.
I think I agree with you. We should drop the insulation.
I think we should just drop it and just move forward.
I like the idea of the plywood, as you can, put shelves.
That, we could do that later on in time. But at this point now, we can get things going, get everything situated, get everything in order, what we need to do to get this up and running after we get done building. Because I talked to one of the ladies that's coordinating for us, Shirley, and she's really doing a great job trying to find volunteers. And then this will make it easier for them by putting shelving in and stuff like that if we go with plywood. But after, right now, it's get it up and running and move forward. That's where I kind of look at the whole thing, but...
I think we agree on that.
The other question that came up in terms of heating, the green building, that's, she heard that it was going to be heated by electric heat.
No, 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 no. What it is, is I, last year, I was supposed to go in front of you in the board here to get put heating in. I had to jump in and go put the heating in because we needed it for the winter time to get things going and keeping things proactive, moving forward. So both sides of that, both sides, there's a wall in the middle. The both sides got heat and AC. The ACs are the window units. So they have the gas heat. That's the other gas heating, or the molding heaters we put in there back in October. I believe it was October back then, to move this forward so we can actually try and do some of this stuff inside during the winter time. Do away with the electric right off the bat and get the gas going. And then we can determine by the end of this year or this fiscal year what we're burning for gas, and then we'll play from there. So we get some, get some type of quantity what we're doing for gas in between both.
Good. Okay. Do you have a motion?
Yeah, are we, are you recommending that we go with Newell?
Newell, yeah. That's what my recommendation is.
So I moved to authorize the transfer station manager into a contract with Newell to install six-inch polysilicate insulation with R36 cover, .06 thick EDPM black commercial type roofing, $4,500 in cost to come from the Energy Committee, $2,000 to come from the town buildings capital reserve. Second? I'm sorry, didn't hear you. Okay. Any discussions? Questions? All in favor?
All right. Motion pass.
Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Just one more thing, and I have a, there's a couple of things, yeah. Then I got, we're actually looking good. We got a grant from the NRA for over $3,000 because of the containers we purchased. So we could use that towards anything we use in the recycling and move it towards the end of this year. And the other thing I'm looking into is doing it to the security system of what we have, trying to upgrade the security system due to, you know, a lot of areas of legal dumping, the safety aspect of it. So anything in general, like employee accidents, the residents, more of a protecting and safety aspect of it. Tom and I, in the past, we got together and we looked at the whole thing and the recommendation from him, too. And it's nice that we can actually, because we got a lot of blind spots in the area that's really causing a big problem and stuff. And we don't want any accidents. We're kind of looking at for the safety aspect for the residents, too. So I'm just letting the board member know upfront that I'm in the process of doing that.
Okay. Also, I know you've just got back from a difficult time, but are you talking to other cities, towns, whatever, about the waste, the paper disposal, et cetera, et cetera? Any ideas coming out about what they might be...
Well, there's not really many ideas. It's basically, we get to the point that, like, for example, mixed paper, and take that for example. We're going to have to, if we get more than what we're paying for MSW, you're almost better off just to mix it in with the trash a little bit at a time, but not to get carried away, you know, just enough to blend it in. But we don't want to stop the residents or anybody. We want them to continue what they're doing.
Is the pricing, is the pricing moving at all, Toby?
It's going up, minus up. So it's 40-something right now, a ton, a pound, something like that. $40 a ton, I'm sorry, ton. And what the pricing aluminum steel, if we could all focus on what the steel is, that's the important value right now. We need to try, the cardboard, for example, is still above water. Okay, that right there, we're looking, you know, probably a truckload, a couple of grand. I got that going out. Actually, it should be next, beginning of next week. They're going to sell that for us, and I'll have an exact figure because every day is a change on that. So individual items. What I'll do is I'll have, I get a slip, I should get another one in another week of an update of the marketing aspect of it. Because what I'll do is I'll take a look at that and see what it is. Regardless what it is, what they do, the NRA is trying, doing the best they can to sell these products at the high dollar. They're doing the best they can. They know that we, as at the transfer station in St. New Hampshire, we keep our stuff clean and not just us helping. The residents are doing a great job doing that, too, you know, keeping everything clean. That's the value that's going into the town. Like for the aluminum, we haven't even got the check yet for the aluminum. And now that we're up to, I talked to Joe, and we've got a good chunk of change that came in since last year. You know, we're pretty close to $50,000, $60,000. So besides that, but the marketing part of the mixed paper and the... That's pretty much really hitting its hardest, the mix, the paper. So that's really, really taken a toll. The also, the electronics started coming into play. But the company I'm dealing with, electronics, they're actually working with us at this time because we're a good customer with them. Because we do what we're supposed to do for the state, is weigh them out. And they'll know it pretty close exactly because what happens is they don't, and they separate it, and we separate it, that they charge us extra for that stuff, and they charge other towns that way. But we are the ones pretty well organized, and we make sure that they're in the right locations and right boxes. And also, they don't have to spend the time to do it. They just put in the areas, they have to charge labor and stuff extra. So we try to keep it down to a minimum. So right now, we've been good under $1,000 electronics, and that's really good to me. That's because also sometimes we get credited back due to the copper, anything. A lot of the silver and stuff that's in electronics and the keyboards. There's a lot of money on that stuff. So what the market itself is, to take it, to get unloaded, it's starting to go up everywhere else. So at this time, I just sent electronics out last week, and I should know more what the update is. I'll find out where everything comes back with a sheet. Now tells me where the marketing's at with this, like, this other company I'm dealing with. And plus the marketing due to, through the NRA at the same time.
Just for clarification, the NRA is a recycling association, is it?
That's correct.
I just want to be sure we understand and market.
R, R.
Yeah, they help us in between things in order to, they work with the market in that to help us, you know, sell it and get the best price. But it's up to us, and us, myself, and employees and residents, to try to keep it clean as possible to benefit us for the town, to get that revenue and the profit to come in to continue on moving forward. So what now, we're at the stage now that I'm doing, I'm offsetting areas like the mixed paper due to, I can actually take cardboard and mix it with mixed paper that offsets the price cost at this time. But now that we're going to do is we're just doing cardboard, and then maybe we'll see where we're at with the marketing with the mixed paper later on down the line. Okay? And then if it goes way up beyond, like $70 a ton, we'll say towards the end of the year, we'll start mixing it half and half to compensate for it to make sure that we're getting something back. We want to stay, try to stay in that positive area. That was trying to do. Plus with aluminum, we're trying to do aluminum the same way. Aluminum's high, and aluminum pans and stuff like that, that's a lot of money, I tell you, a lot of value. So we're trying to keep everything together, keep it separated. Plastic is there, though we're doing okay with plastic, everything else. But there's a few things that we're having some problems is we're trying to juggle it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Toby.
Thanks. I have three questions for Mr. Van Aken. They're not very hard, hopefully. The other power savings that the Energy Committee suggested at the transfer station, are those completed now?
The what?
The power savings, the energy savings. You were getting rid of a light in the circuit out back. There was a couple of things.
Oh, you're talking about the power back there?
Yes. So that's all done?
Oh, the electrical stuff, okay, yeah, that's all done. Everything's all done, yeah. The swap shop meter and way out back, the old building, that's off to the plate. Only thing we have for electric bill is just the main building itself.
Okay. In terms of, you talked about in terms of the video stuff, are you going to look at a system so you can identify license plate numbers? Because I think that was the problem.
Yeah, actually, Tom and I, we were talking about that earlier. And this, the system, yes, we can identify, we don't, we can't see. You've seen the system right there. It's just so difficult to zoom in. Even though if there was an accident, somebody trips and falls or whatever, we just... You can't see, you can't zoom in. License plate, you can't see at all, period. All you can see is the color of the car and the type of car. That's about it.
So the system you're looking at will be able to identify those kinds of...
Oh, this is system, yeah. This is more up to speed that you can actually zoom right in on the license plate. You can zoom right in, I don't know, somebody put makeup on their face or whatever. It's up to speed that they're...
The last question I have is in terms of the swap shop, in terms of when's it going to get done? Are the, how many people are going to help you out? What's the situation with that?
With the volunteers?
No, 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 no.
Just the building part?
Building part, yes.
The building part of it, yeah. Randy and I, we're looking at it. So Randy and us, we're going to, three or four of us, and work on that and progress and get it done and get it covered up, get it further. So we'd actually move on and get Jim Banks in so he could start doing the electrical part of it. Right now, since we have the skin off, he could come in and do a lot of that. And plus, I can get a lot of the doors up now. Granted, we verify that tomorrow for sure. I want to make sure how much timber we need left and how much we have so we can move forward and get it completed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You all set?
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to number four, selectmen monthly staff training.
The general consensus is that the staff want motivation and coaching as their next class. She's going to break it down in terms of what exactly each of the participants are going to be looking for. And just like she's done in the past, she'll have a conversation via email or phone in terms of what people are interested in and if there's any suggestions that they have. Also, in terms of the new employee, to give us pricing in terms of what the, this system, the system we rate, so this new person can get up to speed. But for doing the classes, it's the same as prices what we have before at $600. And she's willing to work with us in the fall to set up a schedule. So as we get closer to the fall, I'll ask the town administrator to have contact with the staff at that particular, and we'll find a time for us to do that. But she's on board. She's looking forward to it.
Thank you. Number five, town administrator.
At the request of the select board, and I believe it was the last meeting, you'd asked me to put together a draft of a charge for a solid waste advisory committee. So that was in your agenda packet. I don't know whether you have any recommended changes, alterations, additions, deletions. We did put it in the eCrier, a brief synopsis, and a request of anybody who was interested. I don't think we've heard from anybody.
I have a couple of suggestions. Got your key components R, and there's one through eight. The word assist, I need you to change that because it's not what I envisioned. I don't want them to have to force to be volunteered to assist in the swap shop. I'm looking for what your thoughts were on that, what the word assist meant. Governance of the swap shop.
No, not necessarily. I mean, I guess it could be as much as volunteering with the swap shop, making policies for, or recommending policies for the swap shop. Or we could take it out completely.
You see where I'm going after. I think it's an important issue, but...
I think in terms of just recommending, in terms of changes. Couple of, and at least for me, my focus would be for them to look at in terms of recyclables, what should be doing with those? Should we be charging for things coming, you know, into the transfer station? I want them to focus on those particular things. I don't have a problem with anything else on the list, but I want them to focus on those particular things. That's the need, at least in my eyes, at this particular time. But yeah, I'm amenable to changing assists. I don't expect them to be in there helping, but I expect them, you know, to look at the whole swap shop process. One of the things I'd love them to look at in terms of the whole coupon issue. It takes some time, it takes some effort. Is it worth it? I have no idea. And those are the kind of things I'm looking for them to give us some recommendations on. And I assume the transfer station manager has seen this, too? We're not trying to blindside you, but just so that you're aware and if you have any...
No, no, not at all. Technically, they have, I don't know if you're aware of, they do. We do have procedures on it, but they're old procedures on how the swap... Just take a swap shop, for example. All right, there's old procedures, there's orientation and stuff like that. And also explains a little bit of how the ticket and the operation works. So at least they'll be aware of it when they do come aboard at this time, that they do. They'll be aware of how the tickets work and it wouldn't drop off and so forth.
Well, in terms of, you weren't here for the conversations that we had, but one of the questions was in terms of the cost that the things would be charged for.
Yeah.
And you talked about, I think the last time, I think it was two or three meetings ago, in terms of changing those fees.
Yeah, the fees, yeah. It's, if you do any change in a short period of time, it'd probably be best to do to get rid of the two fifties and go to threes or fives at this point now. And then you can figure on the increases later on if need be. But you have to sit down, look at the whole scenario, the whole thing of the marketing part of it. And then where it's taking place and where, is that, is it working? How's it working for us? How's it benefiting for us? You got to look at those areas. And that's the thing, because of the way the prices are of the hauling and the way, how much we got to pay to get rid of electronics. I got a percentage, I don't have the exact numbers, but I can get pretty close to what I have for individual particular items. Then you know how much that is, we have to come out of the town's pockets in order to get rid of it. So you got, we got to look at all these scenarios at this time.
I'd love to get some information in terms of, because there's administrative costs to doing that whole system in terms of the whole payment system and you have.
Oh, there is, there is, there is.
What's the cost benefit? Because you get the certain residents that say, geez, I'm already paying my taxes for you to take care of my refugees.
Right.
And now you're charging me extra. You've got that argument. But the thing is, in terms of whatever that particular cost is, are we benefiting the town by charging those fees?
Well, that's the thing, that's where you got to weigh everything out is how we got, that's the whole idea. It's how we're going to weigh this out. I know that we're paying enough taxes, I hear that all the time.
You get the tax bill too.
I'm paying my tax, right. But I'm just looking at this fact here, we have to weigh the whole thing out, not just this one particular item. Everything that surrounds us in this town in order to kind of justify those numbers. To have a good explanation for it.
Yep, that's why I want this committee to look at that particularly, that's my focus.
That's number two, I think. So other than the change with swapping out, swapping out.
Well, the swap shop.
Swapping out the word assist that I've got some other recommended language, are there any others that?
But you could use the word as far as assist. I mean, things like with the establishment of policy and procedures for the swap.
Well, that long as it says that.
That would be okay.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, it kind of says, because I do think they have to be involved with.
But I wanted to be there as a sort of assist, which means you have to be a part of the functional aspect of it.
I think it's clear for the hazardous household waste, but I think that would take care of number six.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, it looks good anyway.
Okay, I'll bring that back for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Yep. The LED conversion project RFP was sent out. It went directly to twelve or thirteen firms and also was advertised in two bid aggregators, Big Works and construction summary. So bids are due back June twenty seventh. McGregor did get back to me that the executive director interviews are a week at June eleventh. And the fire chief is available that week if the board wants him to participate in that.
Sure, if he has time.
Okay.
Absolutely.
The police chief, I think is still here, wanted me to mention that they discovered some graffiti and possible indication of squatting at the come and go. And that they've identified the graffiti as being similar to, tied to gang activity. So I think the police is looking into that and, you know, perhaps look into the board to see whether you want us to determine whether we can now do something about that property.
Because we had Karen, you guys looked into this before.
Right, and it's, unless it's a safety hazard, there isn't a whole lot that we can do about it. And at the time, we talked about it, it would rise to that level, so there wasn't really.
The owner is out of state, is that right?
We think so, we think so. We don't really have a way to directly communicate with the owner of the property.
So does it, in terms of what they found, does it rise to the level that we can say it's a safety hazard and get them to board it up or something?
We can certainly talk to the police chief and see what his thoughts are on that.
Couple of concerns. One is the graffiti, we did tie it back to possible gang affiliations out of the Lynn-Salem Mass area. We talked to detectives down there, sent them the pictures and they confirmed that. There was graffiti in the outside of the building, which we had to cover up with some plastic bags to staple them up. And then further graffiti inside the building, which is accessible, is not secured. Once inside, we saw evidence of people, you know, squatting there. At some point, there were some sleeping bags and whatnot in there. So now it's becoming an issue. Obviously, they've been in there once and they want to go in there again. We can't get a hold of the owner. We don't know, we know who he is, we just can't get a hold of him. Karen Rossi said they have been able to get in touch with him through a Realtor out of Madbury. I called him this morning, he never called me back. I guess his tax bill was returned today. So, you know, we have a building that's becoming an issue. But we also have absentee landlord or owner that we can't contact to fix these problems. That creates an issue.
What does the state allow us to do in those circumstances?
I don't know, but my thought was to maybe start with drafting a letter to the owner stating that these are the problems with your building, these are concerns, these are things that you need to address. Someone's like we do, send out a bad check, you send them a letter and say, hey, you have fourteen days to respond or we're going to take further action. So I think we should start documenting these things and maybe draft a letter and send it to them and then it gets returned. Then we have, you know, legs underneath us, we say, hey, we have a building here that's a problem. It's falling down, it's a labyrt, there's like three inches of water in the basement. The stairs are rotten, so, you know, I can't send my officers in there if they've got to go check on it, it's dangerous.
What's it take to condemn a building?
That's what we're trying to figure out, yeah. Chief Nimitas talked to somebody at the state about condemning it. But I'm thinking that between the physical deficiencies of the building and now the possible criminal activity in the building, maybe that'll help.
I agree with you, probably the letter is the best thing for documentation. I think you can work with the town administrator, put a letter together.
Absolutely.
I guess we can have the chairman of the board sign it, I guess.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom.
Good, thank you.
Next week, I will be at the municipal managers conference from Wednesday afternoon to Friday. So I'll be out of the office, but reachable. And you may recall, sometime during a recent meeting, I surprised the board of the fact that the legal budget has gone over or variety reasons. But when you look at the general legal budget and the FairPoint budget, because that lawsuit is still chugging along, we're over budgeted by, it's only seventeen hundred dollars. And the planning and zoning still has thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars left to spend. But we still have two more months of legal bills. So the board had just wanted me to keep them apprised. So far, barring the unforeseen, in total, we should be, we should be okay. And that's all I have.
I have two questions.
Yeah.
Any feedback for the design RFP that went out? Anything, nobody's called?
No, I mean, I wouldn't really expect anybody to call. I would just expect that they would show up, you know, on June sixth.
Anything from the survey people?
Just the same, which is he's.
You haven't, okay.
He hasn't changed his schedule, we should have something by the end of this month.
Okay. But he hasn't been out yet.
He said he would do that in May and he told me that the schedule didn't change, so.
He didn't see anybody. I didn't see anybody, okay. I saw some people out there.
You did?
Yeah, I did.
Some survey people, okay, it's fine.
Last week, I think, something like that. I'm sure I saw a couple of people on it because I remember them mentioning that. I thought it might be.
And I'm working on the draft of the purchase and sales with our attorney. So that should be completed shortly.
And the whole thing with the Veterans Resort Chapel? We should get money back for that soon, right?
However quickly the sheriff's office can process that. I know that the buyers have an attorney and their attorney is looking into making sure that all of the i's were done and the t's crossed.
There's a lot of i's and t's.
Lots of t's.
Anything else, gentlemen? Okay, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Accept it.
Any comments, anything, all in favor? Motion entered to non-public session. Number RS, I'm sorry.
We got to do the.
What, what?
We just passed the consent agenda.
Who is?
Who's that?
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, my goodness.
You're rolling here.
Don't you have it right there? Don't you have it right there? Huh?
Forgot about that.
There's only, there's only one person that's.
I've already provided enough writing and minutes over there.
Oh, really?
He's not getting mine.
Yeah, he's not getting mine, what's the matter?
Do we need to sign this one from you too?
What? Something, where'd that come from? Done, it's all done, all done, all done. This is done. Now?
Now.
Oh, boy. Motion.
Wait a minute. Yeah, you forgot to sign that.
No, I didn't. Now, evaluate it. Now?
Now.
Motion, sorry, motion entered to the non-public session RSA ninety-one A, colon, three, Roman numeral two. You really need to go up to that?
Yes.
Huh?
Yes, we do.
Parentheses, little a, times, what is that?
Yeah, you don't need that part.
X three, comma, parentheses, C.
Well, that's just so we remember what we're doing.
Roll call vote required. You need a second.
Second. I second it.
You got to give me a chance, do it. Selecting Bugby?
Yes.
Selecting LaCource?
Yes.
Selecting Brown, yes.
Motion, Karen.
Motion, Karen.
That's good.
That's yours. Oh, you forgot that one, Sharon.
I'll be darned.
It happened.
That's why you're here, keep our track. Keep our track, keep me in style.
Do you just unlock one?
You can unlock it, yeah.
As you showed that.
That's okay, either way.
It's dead. It's dead. It's not dead. See, you got to be the town administrator, have a key.
There it is.
You got to swipe it like this and then it comes right here. And you unlock it to do that.
Is she good?
Yeah, I think so.
Look at that, see?
See? See?
Swipe it around a little bit.
I'm trainable.
I don't know, I know when it came in.
So you're going to boot the seal.
Huh?
You're going to boot the seal.
So, I make a motion to seal the non-public session minutes. Roll call vote required. You need a second. I need a second.
I'll accept the conversation.
Yes, I second.
Although I don't agree with it.
Oh, you don't agree with it?
I'll accept for the session that we had with the library trustees.
That'll be public.
That'll be public. I'll second it if you take that friendly amendment.
No, I got to think about that.
He's okay, so is.
Second?
Yeah, yeah.
A second, if you're all in favor?
No, roll call vote.
Roll call vote. Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Mr. LaCource?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
And?
Motion.
I don't have a vote.
Motion, Karen.
The motion carried.
That's right, motion carried. If you, because you know, here. He just said he was trainable, so.
No, town administrator does not have vote. Even though I was extending my arm, I was trying to motion into a parliamentary procedure.
No, I don't think that's right by parliamentary procedure, to be perfectly honest.
Oh.
Let's get the book. All right.
Okay, any unfinished business? I would like to suggest that at some point, the select board provide possibly a barbecue or something for the town staff. I know we do certain things, but I think that might be nice sometime during the summer, maybe. Maybe down the Lynn River Park, maybe the selectmen could cook and or dish out food and just provide food for the staff. I thought that would be a nice thing to do. Maybe we could ask the town administrator to query the staff and find out what day, time would be appropriate, maybe lunchtime, maybe dinnertime, I don't know.
Just do a barbecue?
Something like that.
That'd be nice.
I just think that would be something nice that we.
Do it on a weekend or?
I would say, you know, whenever they're free.
I want to do it one day when John's available.
It's a good idea.
So I don't know.
He tends to have a lot of things to.
Well, I don't know what your schedule is, so maybe the town commissioner can ask us too.
Anyway, I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Are you amenable to?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Already got it in.
John, anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay, motion adjourned.
How about the minister, town administrator, you got anything?
No.
Second? I think she referred to me as Snarky.
No, you were Snarky.
All right. Reading a term.
You read a vote on me, did it?
You said, you said.
Oh, no.
Okay.
It's adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.